Good evening. It's 6:00 PM, September 13th, and I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. I'd like to announce that this meeting is being televised live on local cable, Channel 8. Could we all rise and say the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next. Does anyone have a public comment regarding anything not related to any agenda items tonight? If so, please check in with Mary Ann to my left, and you can have three minutes to make your comment. Anybody? I don't see anyone. Okay, thank you. I will ask for public comments on each hearing tonight at the end of said presentation of that specific hearing. People sitting tonight, I guess, for the first, well, the first one, I think, is going to be...
First one is, to get extended.
Yeah, so for the first one, Scott, which will be 31 Keelway, would be three regular members and why don't we go...
Wait a minute, the first one is...
Captain's Row.
You have a letter that says it's...
I know, but we gotta read it.
No, I agree, but there won't be any more sitting per se. There'll be people sitting only to vote on it, but I'm...
Got it.
Yeah, so I guess I'll put it this way is, the first hearing, which will be very short, will be three regular members and let's say Brad and Charlie, and then we'll make a decision thereafter. So Charlie, could you read the first hearing, please?
New hearings. 108 Captain's Row, owners Nicholas M. and Kathy DiGisto. Trustees request a written finding under 174-17 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to allow for replacement of an access timber stairway in lower deck dock on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 96, parcel 16, Mashpee, Mass. And then in perenns, continue to Wednesday, October 11, 2023, at request of the attorney.
I believe we have a letter to the effect of requesting that extension?
I do not have the letter.
Could someone read that into the record, please?
I got it. August 28, 2023. Mr. Ron Von Vee, Chairman Mashpee Zoning Board, regarding Nicholas and Kathy DiGisto. I apologize for bashing your name. 108 Captain's Row. Dear Chairman Von Vee, as you know, we represent the owners of the property referenced above. Is hereby requested that the Wednesday, September 13, 2023 hearing be continued to October 11, 2023, as the applicants are currently scheduled to be heard before the Conservation Commission on September 21, 2023. Thanks for your attention. Very truly yours, Christopher J. Corrane.
If I could just state that I was very concerned about this application, about not having those orders, just to let you know.
Yes, yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mary Ann, are we okay with dates?
No problem.
Okay, so we have a request for counsel in reference to 108 Captain's Road for extension until October 11, 2023. Can I get a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Approved. All right, so the next one will be the same five members, which would be three sitting, normal members, and the two, which would be Brad and Charlie. And so Charlie, could you read 31 Keelway into the record, please?
Certainly, run. 31 Keelway. Owners Michael J. and Maureen G. Tringali. Trustees request a written finding under 174-17 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to allow for a deck reconstruction, extension, and alterations to a pre-existing, non-conforming structure on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 120, parcel 134, Mashpee, Mass.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, Attorney Christopher Corrane, representing Michael and Maureen Tringali. They are the owners of the property at 31 Keelway, which is located in the R3 zoning district, and they are seeking a written finding under 174-17 to make certain improvements to the single-family residence. This lot is wholly within the flood zone, so your nonconformities are lot coverage at 100% and also the setback to wetland at zero. Also, the lot itself is nonconforming because of the flood zone and the frontage is short of the 150 that's required in the R3. So those are our nonconformities. What the proponents are proposing is very similar to a project I brought before you a few months ago at 17 Bow Sprint. So it's kind of a mishmash of different little modifications to the home. I tried to capture those modifications in the photographs that I gave the board, but specifically what they're planning on doing is removing the front stairs and decking and enclosing that front entrance. They are going to repair and/or replace the decks in kind on the southern... Let me show you. So the first, to remove the stairs is up in the front here. The repair, replace of the decks and add the rent station is here at these decks. They are proposing to remove the decking around the pool area here and replace it with patio. And they are going to remove an existing stairway and landing here, and they're going to add a stairway along the house. And that's again, these are the existing conditions. And then this is what the new, the highlighted is what's new. So there's the enclosure, there's the decks that's in kind. It's not expanding or anything of that nature. The pool patio, the removal of the existing stairs and landing and putting them closer along the house. So those are the modifications that are proposed. None of these modifications will be exacerbating or intensifying any of the existing nonconformities, so we're not getting any closer to any of the setbacks. We're not creating any new nonconformities. The, you know, as I said, the lot coverage is 100%, however, the structure coverage is actually decreasing in this project. It's going from 11.67% to 10.5%. I think that's primarily driven by the decks that are being removed and replaced with patio, because the patio is not considered a structure.
Say those percents again.
Yep, so currently, the structure coverage is 11.67%. That is being reduced to 10.5%.
So that's not depicted on the plan, though, right?
Yes, it is right here. Right here.
Okay, on the second page. Oh, I see, yeah, I'm looking in the first one.
Yeah, which is the proposed conditions.
Thank you very much.
Yep. So again, you know, these are pretty modest modifications to the property. Again, the overall coverage of structures is decreasing. We're not creating any new nonconformities. We're not intensifying any existing nonconformities. So I think overall, and you know, certainly this house is and the project is consistent with the neighborhood redevelopment. So I would suggest to the board that they could approve this and find that these modifications are not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Could we read some letters into record? I'd like to hear what Board of Health and Conservation has, please.
I've got them right here if you want, Scott.
That would be great, John.
Board of Health. 31 Keelway. Board of Health, no increase in bedrooms to remain four-bedroom, no comment. The other one is the Conservation Department. Daniel Kent, relative to 31 Keelway. Notice of intent permit application for alterations to existing house and pool patio approved at August 24 hearing. So those are the two that I have.
The second was Conservation, I'm sorry?
Conservation and Board of Health.
So you're not updating the system...
No, there's no, as I said, we're not... These modifications all really have to do with kind of exterior issues, so there's no increase in bedrooms. There's no real interior expansion or anything of that nature, so... You know, as I said, we're talking about decks, pool patio, stairways, and a front entryway. So it's not kind of, we're not making a traditional, like, addition to the house that would, you know, maybe constitute another bedroom or something of that nature.
Scott, do you see any plan issues?
No.
And a decrease in lot coverage.
Decrease in structure coverage, yes.
David, you see anything?
Well, they're removing the main egress. So I'm worried about egress there because all the doors I see are slivers. The main egress needs to have a hinged door. So we can deal with that in the permanent process.
The powder room's got a door exiting. The powder room has a door exiting.
You already did on the...
Yeah, there's the front door in the foyer. Then there's a hinged door from the powder room. It looks like it goes outside.
To the exterior.
Yeah, I think that's exterior.
Okay, all right, so yeah.
Well, if that weren't the case, you would have, certainly, you'd have to...
Have a building permit issue.
At the permit stage, right? Meaning building permit stage. Do we have any letters from the butters? No? David, you... Board members, any other comments?
I have none.
All right, well, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody have any... Okay, that being said, let's have a vote. I'd like to get a motion to... Do we have any additions to our standard motions?
I think everything seems to be covered in what Mary Ann...
I think you are correct. So can I get a motion, please?
So, motion relative to 31 Keelway. Owners Michael J. and Maureen G. Tringali. Trustees request a written finding under 174-17 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to allow for a deck reconstruction, extension, and alterations to a pre-existing, non-conforming structure on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 120, parcel 134, Mashpee, Mass, with the following conditions. Motion, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass General Laws 40A Section 6. Two, site plan. Prepared for 31 Keelway Mashpee, Mass. Scale 1 inch equals 20 feet. Date August 2, 2023. Drawn by R.A.R., checked by T.B. Job number 22133. Sheet 1 of 2. Existing conditions and proposed additions. Prepared by B.S.S. Design. Stamped and signed by Thomas Jackson Bunker, registered professional land surveyor. Number 3, house plans. Prepared for 31 Keelway. A1, lower level plan. A2, first floor plan. A3, second floor plan. A4, exterior front and right elevations. A5, exterior rear and left elevations. Prepared by K. Marshall Works Design. Number 4, any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Number 5, conditioned on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health and Conservation Department comments. Number 6, the board finds that the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing, non-conforming structure to either the town or to the neighborhood. 7, the board finds that the application as submitted is not substantially more detrimental than what existed prior to removal of the existing structure and that there is adequate land area to provide sufficient parking and there were no new nonconformities being created.
Do I have a second?
Second.
That would be Brad, right? All those in favor?
Aye.
All set?
Thank you.
Very good. One thing which we were saying in the, not referencing this, I think I should make the statement. We say that no, any changes to the plan... Remember, I mentioned that if they go to Conservation and other board, it may be a different plan than this. And I'm wondering how we can manage that in a motion.
I think if we approve this plan, if they take a change, it's not acceptable.
Yeah, I get it. Because there's a way to manage around that, I think.
Maybe.
Yeah, we're making the assumption, don't we? We assume that what Conservation saw is what we see.
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Just to comment on that for a minute. I mean, the problem that we're now having is that Conservation is now requiring us to file before coming to this board, before they're, you know, they're making us file with zoning before they've even heard it.
I'm trying, I'm working on straightening that out. I think that is incorrect.
Right. So we're giving them plans that may not reflect, or giving the zoning board plans that may not reflect what ends up at Conservation because we're prematurely filing with you guys.
I don't, well, I don't think we should be having this conversation.
No, I know, but...
But we'll leave it alone, but I have my own, my own opinion.
Anyways.
That's for another time.
Not to...
What did you want me to do with this, William, sorry?
I asked if you, Mary Ann, does he need to sign, stamp that and sign it? Yeah, I got you.
There you go, sorry. He just wants me to sign a bunch of things.
Let me keep you honest.
I get it. It's a big, big, heavy lift for you.
One minute.
Yeah, so, Dean. There you go.
Scott, all done?
Scott's all done. I don't even know why Scott came.
Scott's thinking the same thing.
The board thanks Scott for coming.
Right.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Take care, Scott. Jesus, that makes you having me sign here. Okay, so the next hearing will be five of us sitting at this table right now, two full-time members and three associates. That being said, Charlie, would you read 80 Poncorn Point, please?
Sure, run. 80 Poncorn Point Road. Owners James C. Atkins and John J. Welpman request a written finding under 174-17 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a garage on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 100, parcel 4, Mashpee, Mass.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, Attorney Christopher Corrane, representing the applicants, James Atkins and John Welpman. The project is twofold. It is to construct a garage, as shown here. There is also an addition here, which is within zoning jurisdiction because it's within 50 feet of a wetland resource area. So we are seeking approval of both of those two additions to the home, and we're seeking that under 174-17. This project is located, or this parcel is located, in the R3 zoning district. The lot is only partially affected by the flood zone, so the lot size is 32,571 square feet when you deduct the flood zone. The total upland area is 60,988 square feet. But again, this is not wholly within the flood zone, only partially within the flood zone, and that leaves a lot area for zoning purposes of 32,571 square feet. So as shown on the plan, the existing lot, we can go by lot coverage in this case because the existing lot coverage on the 32,571 is under the 20% as required by the bylaw. We're at 15.4%. With these proposed additions, the lot coverage will be going up to 19.82%. And that is lot coverage. So we don't, we don't have to deal with structure coverage in this particular, in this particular scenario or this particular application, because we're under the 20%. So the only reason we're before this board for these two additions is because of the 50, we're 50 feet of a resource area. So we're 50 feet of the resource area here, and we're 50 feet, or 50 feet from the flood zone line here. So that wraps us into your jurisdiction. We don't have any other setback, nonconformities to side, rear, front, or lot coverage. So again, we're only here because of the 50-foot setback to the wetland. Coincidentally enough, the only addition, the only thing that needed to be approved by the Conservation Commission is this 50. This garage is not in their jurisdiction because it's not in the flood zone, and it's not within 50 feet of any other resource area. So Conservation doesn't, it's not in their jurisdiction. But the addition itself on the house has been approved by Conservation. So, you know, again, where this garage is proposed is within 50 feet of that flood zone line, but it's in driveway area, it's in, you know, mostly disturbed areas. The addition is in mostly disturbed areas. We're not, you know, exceeding any lot coverage requirements. So all in all, I think that, you know, these improvements, you know, would not be considered, you know, substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So no new nonconformities, not creating, not intensifying any existing nonconformities. You know, again, the only thing that's within your jurisdiction, the only reason this is in your jurisdiction is because of the 50-foot buffer to the flood zone line.
Thank you, Charlie. Could you read in any letters?
Yeah, I, a little one. Conservation Department, from Daniel Kent, relative to 80 Poncorn Point Road. Notice of intent permit application for additions to existing house. Drywall installation, septic alteration, and mitigation plantings approved at August 10 hearing. Garage construction was out of Conservation jurisdiction. And second is the Board of Health comments relative to 80 Poncorn Point Road. Board of Health, in reference to the grinder pump in the garage, be advised of the Title V regulations on grinder pumps, parentheses 310 CMR 15.229, pumping to septic tanks, closed perenns, and submit plans to Health Department for sewer line permit. Space above garage is unfinished and is not fit for human habitation. If it becomes finished, it will be considered an increase in flow and would require an upgrade of the leaching field.
That being said, counsel, do you have a problem with this conditioning on no finish in reference to that second floor of that garage?
I don't have any issue with the condition as written, you know. I guess I would just say that if they decided to and they had to upgrade the leach field, would we, you know, be able to modify the permit?
I think you'd have to come back.
No, I know we'd have to come back, but I just don't want it to, the condition to necessarily...
Well, nobody in this board is saying yes or no, but we are. But I'm saying as chairman, we're gonna, I'd like to condition it on that because Board of Health has stated that, and it's come in front of this board before and this board has approved that change, not that they would...
Right.
Unequivocally.
Right.
But I can tell you they have in the past.
Yes, then I'm...
Whether they will again, I don't know. So Charlie, if you were to make a motion, you were asked to make a motion, would you make certain that, number one, is including unlimited comment-wise to Planning Board comments, I mean Board Health comments? And secondly, that there's no, I don't know, habitability of the second floor of the garage?
Or could you say something to the effect of the upstairs garage to remain unfinished and uninhabited, uninhabitable unless further modified, unless, you know...
I gotta leave that section off. You're okay with the first one?
Okay, then that's fine.
I'm all right, Charlie, with the first one where it's gonna be unfinished and uninhabitable. And then we stop there.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, any other letters?
That's all I have.
What do you have, David?
I'm good.
You okay with the uninhabitable aspect of the garage, et cetera? So that goes without saying, no heat, because, right?
Can't be finished, right.
I do have a couple of questions, one being of the engineers. Engineer here?
Yep, Mark Dibb from Cape and Islands is here.
Smith Dibb, I have a question. When a last site plan was submitted by, I believe, your company, I looked at the roof drainage collection system, and I was told it was a 25-year design with an overflow. And I see the same design, I think, in front of us today. Am I correct?
It most likely is the same design on the roof drains with an overflow, correct?
So I asked my engineer, and I also asked our town, I'll call him town, Mr. Petchy, who by the way is looking at new design criteria for this board and is highly considering, is recommended to me, and he's gonna come back to this board with recommendations, which I, which I hope they'll approve, but that's up to the board, of 100-year design, design in reference to these aspects of collection, et cetera. I don't know how he's gonna pull that off. I think that could be a problem. But that being said, I did say that one of our applications were a 25-year design with an overflow, and he was somewhat taken back by that. He felt that it was substantially underdesigned. I guess for me, I don't see major changes on this plan. I see a garage and I see some additions to a house. The reason why I'm saying this is I can see it coming down the pike soon that these types of things will may change. I'm not saying it's gonna change tonight. I'm not saying I'm asking this plan to change, but I do envision sooner than later that these types of things will not meet a criteria that will be asked in the future.
Can I...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, and I think that will come when we get some direction from Mr. Petchy.
And the reason why I'm saying that is I want people to be ready, because I just don't want them walking in the next meeting if it happens before the, by the next meeting and say, "I didn't know." And so please, please be paying attention. Be aware, because we're having someone look very carefully at our design criteria, and we're gonna possibly put that into effect subject to this board's review and input of that. I have been interacting with Mr. Petchy on various levels in that aspect, so... I am concerned about roof drainage at a 25-year design. I talked to my own engineers, like, jeez, that's like a one-inch storm, depending on time, timing of that storm. But it could be a one-inch storm, right? We could have a 25-year event easily this weekend, easily. So in this case, if this were built, you'd be probably running out your overflow this weekend. Impossible. And so my point is, is keeping water on its own property, I think, is very important. So enough said, but I think it's important to make that statement.
Agreed.
Board members have any concerns, questions? Audience?
Have done. No more, no more letters, right?
Nope.
No audience? David, you're all set?
And there's no correspondence relative to this, other than what's been read into the record?
Right.
Okay, so I'd like to get a motion to close the public hearing, please.
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, public hearing is closed. That being said, please take a moment, make sure that we're all set with plans, et cetera. I did not look closely at the building plans, only because I've been running the meeting, so please take a look at those. David, if you had a chance to look at these? I did look at them at home a little bit, so knowing that Scott was not gonna be sitting on this.
Yeah.
So, but really, my, you know, the second floor of the garage is not gonna be habited, so it's not gonna be finished, so I'm less concerned. So you've got two small additions on the house, which I'm not overly concerned about.
Nope.
Does that make sense?
Totally.
All right, that's fine. That being said, I'd like to get a motion in reference to the application.
Relative to 80 Poncorn Point Road, make a motion. Owners James C. Atkins and John J. Welpman request a written finding under 174-17 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a garage on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 100, parcel 4, Mashpee, Mass, with the following conditions. Motion, number 1. The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass General Laws 40A Section 6. Two, site plan. Prepared of James C. Atkins and John J. Welpman, 80 Poncorn Point Road, Mashpee, Mass. Sheet number 1 of 1, date July 7, 2023. Drawn by M.P.R., checked by M.C. Prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering. Drawing title, proposed addition plan, perenn. No increase in flow, closed perenn. Stamped and signed by Mark D. Dibb, number 45937, registered professional engineer, and Matthew C. Costa, number 52282, professional land surveyor. Number 3. Garage plans and elevations prepared for Welpman Residence, 80 Poncorn Point Road, Mashpee, Mass. Scale as noted. Date 5/27/23. Drawn by J.L.B. Sheet number G1. Garage first floor plan, second floor plan, G2. Design development prepared by Jennifer Bernsteel Archiplicity LLC. House plans, sheet 1. First floor plan, 2. Second floor plan, 3. Basement floor plan, 4. Front and left side elevations, 5. Rear elevation and right side elevation, 4. Conditioned on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health and Conservation Department comments and conditions as read into the record. Number 5. Condition on the upstairs garage area to remain unfinished and uninhabitable. Number 6. Number six, the board finds the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming structure to either the town or the neighborhood. Number seven, any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
That's it. Great, thank you. Thanks, Mark. Brad?
Yep.
More trade.
Okay.
Moving right along?
Yeah.
Yeah, no problem.
So the next public, so the next hearing will be myself, Billy, and the three associates, the only five sitting at the table. Being said, Charlie, would you read the next one and the last one?
The next and last new hearing is 194 Waiting Place. Excuse me. Owners Peter Afrik and Tara L. Gilde request a special permit under 17417.1 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming single-family structure on property located in an R3 Papaneset Overlay District. MAP 112, parcel 49, Mashpee, Mass.
I wanna give one to David. We need a plan, plan overseer. Um, no, I, I'll...
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Again, for the record, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing Peter Frick and Tara Gilde, who are with me tonight in the back. They are the owners of 194 Waiting Place Road and they have applied for a special permit under 174-17.1 to raise and replace an existing single-family residence. As noted in the hearing notice, this lot is within the Papaneset Overlay District, which requires 6,000 square feet of lot area and 60 feet of frontage. This particular lot has 11,938 square feet of lot area and it has over 60 feet of frontage as it's affected by Shore Drive, Waiting Place, and then this way here. So it meets the, the lot is conforming for the Papaneset Overlay District. There is no flood zone that affects this property, so there's no setback to wetland issues, no lot coverage issues as far as the flood zone's concerned, not impacted by the flood zone. The only nonconformity to this house is to the way. So there is only 12 feet between the existing dwelling and this, this 20-foot wide way, which is considered a front yard setback, is required to be 25 feet. Otherwise, the lot, the structure complies with all the minimal dimensional requirements of your bylaw. It is, what they're proposing is a pretty modest raise and rebuild. It's going to be a one-and-a-half-story Cape-type structure. The lot coverage will be increasing from 14.56% to 16.99%, which is still well under the 25% allowed in the Papaneset Overlay District. They are proposing to put in a new innovative technology septic system as part of this project, so you'll get, you're getting the upgrade there. There's no new nonconformities being created. We're not intensifying any, the exist, the one existing nonconformity is not being intensified. It's gonna stay at the 12 feet. It's really not exceeding the footprint too much. You know, again, there's a small increase in lot coverage. There are drywells proposed for this project in order to capture the stormwater. And, you know, again, this is pretty modest. I provided some pictures of the surrounding homes and it will certainly be consistent with, with this neighborhood. So again, you know, we have a pretty modest raise and rebuild. Lot coverage will be 16.99% when it all is said and done, well under the 25% allowed. New IA system, building code compliant, new home, consider, consistent with the neighborhood, drywells, and, you know, I think that overall, no new nonconformities, plenty of parking for two cars. So I would suggest to this board that, you know, this is not substantially more detrimental to neighborhood and the board can make a support, a finding in favor of this project.
Charlie, would you read letters into the record, Conservation, Board of Health, whatever?
Yes.
Take your time.
Relative to the, the Board of Health, please make cased opening going to finished storage room on first floor devoid it being a bedroom.
So does it say size, 6 feet? Does he state size of that opening?
Does not, 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 the, nothing there is in the Board of Health comments.
There was a, a follow-up, I had a follow-up with Zach on this issue. We revised the plans. There should be an email from him from at least last week that we labeled that area, if you look on the plan, it's labeled unfinished and slab and Zach accepted that as not needing the cased opening.
Well, why don't we do this? Could you read that again, please, Charlie?
Yeah, I have two different comments from the, from the Board of Health. One is, please make cased opening going to finished storage room on first floor devoid it from being a bedroom. And look, the second one may take care of what we need to do.
I think the second one, Charlie, was later, correct?
It's not clear.
It was later.
I think, I think, I think it is.
It's definitely later.
I think it is because it says, "Storage space on first floor must remain unfinished to not be considered a bedroom." I think that might be the condition that's...
That was the revised Board of Health.
Perfect. So that being said, if you were asked to make a motion, let's make certain that the latter one, the one you just stated, is part of that motion, please?
Yep, yes.
Okay, do you have anything else, conservation?
Nothing else. I, I know there's at least one letter from an abutter that's in favor of the project. I think there may be two.
Did you not file a conservation?
It's not in, it's not in any, near, it's not in their jurisdiction.
Conservation already commented.
Oh, I'm, so, yeah, right. So then we do have some conservation stating that it's not in their jurisdiction?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
This is the latter.
Okay, that's the latter.
You want the conservation, Joe?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that it's read on the record that it's not within their jurisdiction.
Nope, I've got...
If in fact it is not.
All right.
Yep. You can read this in...
Okay, yep, I've got it, Bill, thank you, I'm sorry. I'm sorry about that. Okay, let's go to the departments first.
Yes.
Relative to the Conservation Department from Daniel Kent, 194 Waiting Place Road, property is not in conservation jurisdiction.
There you go.
And Board of Health, we are already taken care of. And I have an email from John Malloy to Mary Ann Romero dated 9/13/2023 and says, "Dear Chairman Bonvy, my wife Joan and I live at 196 Waiting Place Road. We have directed butters to 194 Waiting Place Road. We have met with the Fricks on several occasions to review their proposed project. The design and scale of the project is very nicely done and we feel it will be a significant improvement and a real asset to the local neighborhood. We believe the incorporation of a new IA system within the project is an additional benefit, which is very timely given our challenges with the Papaneset Bay watershed. Joan and I strongly support this project and hope that it is approved. Thank you for considering our comments. Best regards, John and Joan Malloy." Can I just add my own, too? The option on the part of the owners to voluntarily go the higher route and spend more money, again, is something that needs to be commended by us, I believe.
Agreed. The question is, and I don't wanna lengthen this, was it an option or was it a necessity? But we can ask that. Was the AI system an option or a necessity? Did, did, did the Board of Health require or did the applicants give?
I don't know. I don't know how close it is to the wetland resource area.
There might be a criteria that...
Right.
But anyway, either way, it's great.
But it was done.
I'm glad to hear that, too. Any other letters?
That's it.
I mean, I can say that when I had conversations with the applicants early on in this process, irrespective of whether or not it was gonna be required or not, they were gonna offer it.
Yeah, no, I, I, I wish all applications went this way. So David, do you have any important reference to plans?
I'm good.
Wow. So I, I like to say I, I'm very happy. I wish, I wish raising replaces were historically like this, right?
Agreed.
Environmentally wise, we're, we're making a big plus and from a standpoint of footprint, footprint expansion, very minimal. No, no increase in nonconformities, meaning size-wise.
Nope.
I'm very happy with it, so...
Same. And they're way below what's allowed in that district.
Very happy. I wish they all went this way. Let's go to the audience. Anybody in the audience have anything to say? You sure? I have, I would imagine I know who you are. Okay.
Who's that?
The, the owners. Come on, Billy. Am I right?
Yes.
There you go. See, I kinda figured it.
I can't see.
Yeah. All right, anybody from the board have anything else to say?
Nothing.
Nope.
Boy, you made tonight awful easy, I'll tell you.
I know, this is a, this is a record.
Um, yes, so I'd like to get a motion to close the public hearing, please.
So moved.
Do I have a second? All those in favor? All right. All right, is there anything else we need to look at? Already made my statement about drainage, I don't need to make it again. I guess this couldn't be much more straightforward. I'd like to get a motion.
You have a motion. 194 Waiting Place Road. Owners Peter Afrik and Tara L. Gilde request a special permit under 174-17.1 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming single-family structure on property located in an R3 and Papaneset Overlay District. MAP 112, parcel 49, Mashpee, Mass. with the following conditions. Number one, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under Mass. General Laws 40A Section 9. Two, plot plan, existing and proposed conditions prepared for 194 Waiting Place Road, prepared for Peter Frick and Tara Gilde, scale 1 inch equals 20 feet, date July 26, 2023, drawn by RAR. That's a Boston pronunciation, by the way.
I noticed that, Joe.
Checked by TB, job number 20185. Site plans sheet 1 of 2, drawing number B29-150, stamped and signed by Thomas Jackson Bunker, number 32653. Three, building plans prepared for 194 Waiting Place Road, job number 2222, date July 20, 2023, drawn by JALEL. A2, first floor plan, A3, second floor plan, A4, elevations, A5, elevations prepared by Architect Associates. Number four, conditioned on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health and Conservation comments and that the storage space on the first floor must remain unfinished to not be considered a bedroom. Any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Number six, the board finds that the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming structure to either the town or the neighborhood. The board finds that the application as submitted is not substantially more detrimental than what existed prior to removal of the existing structure and that there is adequate land area to provide sufficient parking and there are no new nonconformities being created.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much.
Keep them coming that way.
Thank you, everybody, have a great night.
Well done. Well done, thank you.
Got you out here before 7 o'clock?
That's it. Do I have a motion up? That's right, we gotta do this. Hang on, hang on.
Okay.
Thank you. Have a great night. There you go. That was all very well done. Well, I think when they're submitted like that, it makes it...
That was a good job.
Makes the job easy.
He did a good...
And I have the zoning enforcement officer looking at plans by weapon. Right?
No, that was well-prepared.
Yeah, very well submitted.
Pretty thick from a Gilde.
Exactly, yeah.
Signatures?
Signatures. I'd like to get a motion to approve the minutes of August 23, 2023.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right. I just wanna give one update to the board. I have been interacting with Mr. Petchy. My goal is to have design criteria so that when an architect engineer comes in here, he puts on a plan, it meets the design criteria, the zoning board of appeals is outlined in the letter or whatever by Mr. Petchy, whatever, and they sign off and there you know what goes online. It's their, their butt goes online.
Will Mr., will Mr. Petchy determine what the design criteria should be?
Yes. So what he's gonna do is, I gave him our special permit and the criteria, so he's gonna give us design criteria for drainage, for lighting, for many aspects. And so when someone submits, we will then look, like, we look very closely at lot coverage. We'll also look for that, just that statement on that site plan that says this, the engineer hereby certifies it meets the minimum design standards as outlined by this board.
Excellent.
And so five years, two years down the road, they have, we have an issue with that lot. It'll be drainage, light, whatever, we look at the design and just say, "Where's your insurance?"
And we'll have the design criteria in front of us to know what it is.
Correct. And so that way, we will be able to make sure that. And so I was, one last thing for me. In reference to variances, I think it's important that in our checklist, under variances, we state the following. What hardship are you relying on in reference to, for the submittal or the application of this variance? And we list the four or five, boom, 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 boom. The applicant checks it off. This board then makes the decision. First thing we do on every variance is, do we concur that there is a hardship as checked off? Whether it be lot size, shape, whatever it may be, we say as a board, yes or no. If the answer is no, there is no variance.
We all know the hardships, right? Financial, irregular lot. What are they?
Soil conditions.
So they are, they are shape, soil conditions, shape, topography. And then it goes on to say also substantial hardship, financial...
Or otherwise.
And so those will be checkbox. And so when this, when this person or people makes an application to Mary Ann, they're gonna check off every single thing and they're gonna be able to say to Mary Ann, whoever makes the application, that provided all this information, and then they sign the bottom, maybe even underpaid to perjury, and then their application's complete.
Will they be limited only to what they have initially checked off in this submission?
I'm not following that.
We could question them and find out if there's...
See, we have a problem exists now, and that is our applications have been going to town clerk with a time period started. Mary Ann's under a gun time. I met with the town clerk and I said, "We really can't have it going this way. What I'd like to do is have it submitted to Mary Ann first." Mary Ann says the application is complete, so she needs to know what complete means, checklist. She then sends a document up to town clerk saying, "The application is, is complete. You now can sign and state that the application timeframe can start." So that she's not under the gun anymore. That's, that's foolish. And the town clerk is, is willing to do exactly that.
Was it customary, and this is just a question on my part, for people to come in and say, "I'm entitled to a variance. I don't know which of these four I'm entitled to, but I'm gonna shoot for all of them?"
In many cases, I don't, I believe those never asked the question. We've never asked a question before. We never, many times we didn't ask the question.
Right, yeah.
That, that, I think that's the foundation. We as a board, the town of Mashpee has gone to town meeting and put their regulations in place, the town zone. We don't have any right to mend that zoning unless it meets certain hardship criteria. Somebody walks in and says, "If we've done it before, I've just done it indirectly. Hey, you want a garage, you wanna put it closer to the lot line, make it garage small." We've said that more than once. We're doing the same thing, only we're gonna do it with a checklist.
Yeah, so there'd be, the four things would be listed. You check off which of those you are seeking to get the variance.
And we would turn to Mary Ann, so, "Mary Ann, which one of these items is the..." And Mary Ann would say, "Oh, it's the lot shape." The board would then say, "Do you..." I would say to the board, "Do you concur that the lot shape is a hardship?" "Yes, yes, yes." "Okay, continue, Mr. Applicant." "No, no, no, Mr. Applicant, you've got a problem. The board does not agree with your hardship. Now, you can either, you can either withdraw or you can, we'll vote on it. You're not gonna, you're not gonna be happy with the vote." That's the way we should be doing it.
And by the way, historically, anyway, and I know...
we as a board still have the, the ability to say, "Oh, we want him to review this, this application, we want peer review."
Okay.
So over our heads, it's more than that, and Mr., and he, he totally understands this, and so he's working on this for us, and I will submit it to the boards that you can review.
All right. And, and one final point on, on the financial hardship. We've seen cases come in front of us where someone wants to build a garage in need of variance, and they say, we say to them, "Well, why don't you build the garage over here?" And they say, "Well, that's going to cost me a lot more money." Well, I'm not sure that that's worth a variance.
Then it becomes a decision of this board as to whether that's, that hardship meets our criteria.
Correct.
Because we could say, "That is not a hardship in our opinion," right? And deny it at that point. Or we could say, "We understand. You got to move your whole leach field, you just put it in last year, I get it."
That can make you, yeah.
Yeah, so there's, so I think, I think we want to reduce the time that she's put in, so we, so you, the board knows that we've got cutoff now of Friday before noon time, right? Which I hope is helping.
Yes.
And so, and now you see a, you know, so all these types of things, I think, will better it, and, you know, that's it. So, can I get a motion to call it quits for tonight? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.